Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council Meeting for May 17th, 2010 to order. First thing as always is just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or a pager, please turn that to the off or the vibrate mode. We certainly appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak to any item on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, are right over in the media table. So if you would please fill that out, and that way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure that we do not overlook you. With that, first thing as always is the roll call and determination of the quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Wa.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
LaCroix. Chapman. Olson.
Here.
Weyffenbach.
Here.
Kroger. Haddock. We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Next, as always, is invocation. If everyone will please rise, Pastor David Kenyon from the Fountain Springs Community Church will be giving our invocation, and then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this absolutely beautiful day. Thank you for making it. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of it and enjoying it. Lord, I pray, and I think it's collectively our desire, that you give wisdom to everybody needing wisdom in this meeting. And, Lord, just may you take control, and may every moment of this be about you and glorifying you. Guide every discussion. Guide our hearts, Lord, and may our hearts just be centered on creating a city that helps everyone and serves everyone the way they need to be served. Lord, we love you with all of our hearts. These moments are entirely yours. Pray this in your name. Amen.
(inaudible)
Next thing as always on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do have three items we do need to add tonight. One will be, the first one will be 112A, which is a set for hearing for a liquor license, and also 112B. You should actually have the background on the dais. And then Alderman Chapman has asked for 187A, which will be a 2012 update. Any other items we need to add to the agenda, please turn on your light. Any other items we need to add to the agenda? Seeing none, the chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed with the addition of 112A, 112B, and 187A, please.
Some more.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Oops, I'm sorry. Let's get back, let's go to Alderman. Sam Quaker.
I would like to add an item 187B, and have that be called Status of South Valley Drive Plan Development Refunds.
We'll call that 187B, and that's all right with the motion maker? You had that?
Yes.
And the seconder. Very good. The motion on the floor is for adoption of the agenda with the addition of 112A, 112B, 187A, and 187B. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the adoption of the minutes, approval of the minutes for the May 3rd, 2010 City Council Meeting. Do we have, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 3rd, 2010 City Council Meeting, and discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're now into awards and recognitions. We actually have quite a few. First thing I'll do is I'll ask Mr. Hadley to come up and join me. He is our March Veteran of the Month. (pause) There. Hey, we got, we got noise. Isn't always the best, but... served our country and served us in protecting our way of life, and I'm very honored to award the March 2010 Veteran of the Month. So let me read this. It says, "In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the March 2010 Veteran of the Month recognition to Ralph L. Habberly..."
Or Hadley.
Sorry about that. Ralph entered the Air Force, actually, Air Force National Guard, we better get that right, in 1960, and the United States Air Force in August of 1962. After training, he served as a heavy equipment operator at a number of bases, including a tour in Thailand in 1965. Ralph was discharged from the Air Force and later re-enlisted in June of 1968. You just couldn't stay out, could you? He received schooling as a communication equipment technician and served as a crew member in the airborne combat post. He was assigned to several bases in the United States and in England. He retired in January of 1985 as a staff sergeant while stationed at Ellsworth Air Force Base. He, boy, I tell you, the list of awards is just absolutely incredible here. His most notable moments were being assigned to a crew member, as a crew member, and participating in Looking Glass Flying Command Post, operating and enjoying pulling alerts at bases that accommodated the EC-135 Flying Command Posts. And just looking, I mean, everything from the Air Force Longevity Service Medal to the Overseas Long Term Medal, I mean, it just goes on and on. In 1985, Ralph married Beverly Hanson and became a stepfather of four children. After retiring from the Air Force, Ralph was employed at the South Dakota State Cement Plant until he was forced to retire due to his health. Ralph and Betty moved to New York, later to Houston, before returning back to Rapid City in 1980, in 2007. Just couldn't stay away, could you?
Nope.
Yep. Ralph is a member of TRIA and actively supports members at every chance. He serves, he served our country with honor and integrity. His willingness to support the United States Air Force is indicative of his accomplishments towards his family, estate, and his city. Ralph, congratulations, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much.
No. Robert, why don't you go ahead and come on up? And I already promised him that I'm gonna mispronounce his name about two or three times here. Robert Canamiro.
Cana Zero.
Cana Zero. Okay, we got it. From now from this point forward, you'll be Robert.
Okay, that works.
Robert is our recipient of the 2010 May Veteran of the Month. So let me read a little bit about Robert. "In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the May 2010 Veteran of the Month recognition to Robert. Robert served a long and rewarding career in the service of his country, devoting many hours to air traffic control. He enlisted in the United States Air Force in 1975. After basic training, he was assigned to..." Is that Kiesler, Kessler?
Kiesler.
Kiesler, Air Force Base, to train as an air traffic controller. He was then assigned to various bases throughout the United States and the United Kingdom, eventually ending up at Ellsworth Air Force Base, where he was dual rated as a traffic, air traffic controller and a radar approach controller. Actually, air approach control watch supervisor. Matter of fact, I've probably talked to you.
Probably.
I've been flying for 25 years. Robert received many awards and decorations, including the Air Force Commendation, the Air Force Outstanding Unit Award. It just there again, just a tremendous number of different acknowledgements through the Air Force and accolades. Born in Warrington, England, to military parents, Robert was educated in the United Kingdom and the United States. He married Rebecca Elliott in 1976, and they have one daughter who is married to Maurice Miller, and they have one grandson, Michael. Robert enthusiastically participates in his community. He is actively involved as a life member of the Retired Enlisted Association, contributes baked goods to the senior citizens' homes, and supports the cornerstone mission, Young Life. He is proud of his military record, his country, his state, his city, and his family. Robert, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Usually, but...
Are you ready?
Yeah. Still talking to you.
Say hi, and turn up to me next time.
Yeah.
Sixty Mike.
Sixty Mike.
Okay, where's Tim? Why don't you bring Matthew up? One of the other things that we get to do is to acknowledge our long-term city employees that have given so much of themselves and really created a career out of their positions here in the city. So with that, Tim, why don't you go and tell us a little about Matt and his career with the Fire Department?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Matt. Tonight, I have a distinct privilege this evening to visit a little bit.
We better, Culberson.
I'm sorry, Matt Culberson. Captain Matt Culberson. Matt has been with us for 20 years now. Twenty years is a distinct accomplishment within the department. He's been a very, very much a asset to the department overall. He's very accomplished in the hazardous materials component of our department. He's very proactive, a good mentor for new firefighters. He seems to be a very great problem solver, and in our business, that's something that comes along almost every day. Anytime you need something accomplished within the department, Matt's a guy you can rely upon, and we definitely appreciate his years of service and look forward to many, many more. One thing with 20 years is that that's a component, he's achieved the rank of captain, and at 20 years, you're looking, we hope to see a lot more out of Matt in the future, and I'm sure we will, so, Matt Culberson.
Would you like to say something? Where's Jerry Reckert? Come on up, Jerry. There you are. There again, Jerry Reckert also has reached a milestone, 25 years with the city of Rapid City and also with the Fire Department. With that, Tim, why don't you give us a little bit of, what was it, 20? 20, 20 years.
Great. We hope to see him for at least another five, so...
Another five. It's not ready to retire yet.
That's exactly right. Once again, Jerry is very much a very beneficial part of our department. Jerry's, has a long history in the fire service as well. His father was part of our department years ago. He retired back in, and your grandfather?
Nineteen.
Back in 1990, so Jerry's carrying quite a tradition forward within his family. Jerry's very active in the technical area of water rescue, and also is a very integral component of our strategic planning process in the department, which helps us plan for the future and develop our department and continue to grow. So Jerry will obviously continue to be here for a long time, we hope, and we hope to see him continue to excel within the department as well. So Jerry, thank you very much.
Would you like to say a few words? Let's get Captain Hubner up. Well, not only are we acknowledging his long employment with the city, we're sorry to say that he's going into retirement, and so we wish him the best, and with that, Tim, why don't you tell us a little about the captain?
Thank you. Captain Galen Hubner. Today, I believe, is actually his 34th anniversary with the Rapid City Fire Department. So 34 years, what a, what a great career. What a great asset to our department overall. He's obviously seen many, many changes, several chiefs, expansion of the department, expansion of the services, the city growing. There's really some things with Galen is that he's also a can-do kind of person. If there's a special project to be had or to be completed, Galen's our, Galen's our man. One of the most recent ones that really, that kind of stands out is the Christmas Parade. If you see the flashy, lively float that occurred last year, Galen was our, was our lead person on that, so... The thing with Galen that I know personally I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss is the historical knowledge of the community overall, our downtown area. Galen has a very great knowledge of our structures, our buildings, the growth of the community, the history of the department, and obviously, we know he's not going far away, we hope. We hope he comes to visit many times, but we definitely appreciate his long years of service, the support, and the, and any of the words of wisdom he gave us over the years. So Galen, congratulations, and thank you very much.
I gotta say, the city's been a great employer to work for, and Fire Department's been very professional, progressive, and I'm proud to have been a part of it. Thank you.
Chief, why don't you go ahead and come up? I know Tom's here somewhere, I saw him. There you are, come on up, Tom. Now we get to honor one of our police officers. Tom Sinsec has been with us for 25 years, and so with that, Chief, would you give us a little bit about his background?
Well, when I was a little boy... Tom was hired, coincidentally, on the same day I was, on May 28th, 1985, and I've worked alongside of him in one capacity or another since. He's spent time as a patrol officer, and he's spent over 15 years as a detective, and that's what he's really known best for. He was promoted to sergeant and put in charge of our training section, and so recently, year or so ago, we combined his job and also put him in charge of our records section, so he's got, really doing two jobs at once, and that's what you get for being good at your job. So he's been a good, loyal, dedicated employee, and it's been good to have him for 25 years.
And as you just heard the chief say, that he got hired in the very same day as Tom, so obviously, we also have an award for Chief Allender. And there again, it is to acknowledge 25 years of service to the Rapid City Police Department. Steve has been an incredible leader of our police department. We're so fortunate to have somebody of his caliber, making sure that, that our police department reaches their, their highest goals, and I will tell you, one of the things that I can personally tell you about our police department is the fact that integrity is what it's all about. They are one of the few accredited police departments in the upper Midwest, and they truly deserve that. Chief, thank you so much. We look forward to many more years. You've been chief two and a half years now? And we look forward to many more years of your good service. With that, Chief, you wanna say a few words?
Thanks. Well, 25 years, you know, public service has got its rewards and challenges, and I've been very proud to work here for 25 years. It's been a good, it's been a good time. You know, Tom and I both can say now that we've officially worked here longer than we haven't worked here, so that says something. But anyway, thank you.
Where's Coach? Barry? Coach, come on up. Well, the other exciting thing that we get to acknowledge tonight, for those of you that haven't heard, we have a hockey team in Rapid City, and they did quite well this year. And I tell you, the public support has been just absolutely incredible, and a good example of this was on Tuesday, we, last Tuesday, we were actually over at the Civic Center, and you have to remember, there's no game going on, and this was a celebration of their accomplishments, and almost 2,000 fans came out just to acknowledge the accomplishments of the Rush Hockey Team. So I mean, that really tells you what kind of public support they have. And I had the opportunity, and I'm gonna read it again, and this is actually a proclamation, and let me just read where it says, "Whereas Rapid, the Rapid City community has come to appreciate professional hockey and has vocalized this in a newfound appreciation in a higher and higher decimal levels throughout the season, and whereas the Rapid City Rush Hockey Team members have sparked intense interest in the sport by fans of all ages, especially by aspiring young hockey players, and whereas head coach Joe Ferris and the assistant coaches and all the staff have assembled and guided a great team of players into a cohesive and winning team, and whereas the community has benefited socially and economically from having a professional hockey team, and whereas in just their second season, the Rapid City Rush is the Central Hockey League's champion, and whereas the Rapid City Rush won the 2010 Central Hockey League's President's Cup in a double overtime victory. And now therefore, I, Alan Hanks, Mayor of the city of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2010 as the Rapid City Rush Day." What an incredible accomplishment they've made in just two short years. Barry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Coach?
On behalf of Barry, our ownership group, my wife and our hockey club, majority of us are not from Rapid City, but we just wanna thank everybody. We've made this our home, and our players feel so at home here, and we're very appreciative, and hopefully Rush Day is May 11th, 2011 as well. So thank you very much.
I'd also like to say, on behalf of the ownership group, Scott Mueller, Donnie Ward, and myself, we have a great facility, and I think it's something that people of Rapid City can be very, very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And just so you know, Coach Barry promised me a repeat next year. He didn't tell you that yet, but, so it's on your shoulders. Okay, thank you, everyone. That does take us through awards and recognitions. We are on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have one speaker request form. Just a reminder, as always, whenever we do have, when we have public comment, we do time this to three minutes, and with that, we have a speaker request form from Brendan Casey. Mr. Casey, whoops, if you'd identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours, sir. Whoop, hang on. I don't, I don't think we have your mic on yet.
This doesn't get into my time, does it?
Nope.
Okay, let's restart. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Brendan Casey. I'm the president of Epic Outdoor Advertising. We are participating in the, what we now are calling the Public Purpose Signage. We own nine LEDs throughout the city of Rapid City. We cooperate with the police department, with virtually every 501(c)(3) in Rapid City, the Civic Center, et cetera. As some of you may remember, with just the slightest amount of encouragement, the mayor saw the vision to put two people on the sign committee, that would have been, who actually used the code. That would be me, and then a guy from Rosenbaum's. The second meeting we had, of course, after being, and I believe, a 90-day moratorium, the mayor was kind enough, through Joel Landine, to say, "You know what? The on-premise signs, we're not gonna worry about them now." They were still stuck with a 90-day moratorium, though, on the eve of tourism season. This ordinance has been, or this recommendation's gonna come to you through legal and finance, and then for your first and second reading. I only say that because, you know, the sign industry has been through this about every two years in the decade that I've been in the sign business. That is, either on a whim, or usually not more than a whim, we get thrown into a moratorium, we get put on a committee of, well, what I like to call a fair and balanced committee of sign haters, and then we run an ordinance up here to you to be rubber snapped. I think it's time to maybe look at some other issues. So that ordinance is coming to you, that committee is done. I'm looking to you tonight to set up another committee, and that is to inspect the other billboard company in town, and that is the city of Rapid City. The city of Rapid City owns the sign right down here on the corner that you're all aware of. It was put in largely with the assistance of then-councilman Hanks, who was the Civic Center liaison, and that sign, I believe, still has 500,000 worth of advertising per year hooked to it. Not to mention the exterior signage, the bus signage, the banners hanging throughout Rapid City, et cetera. So I guess after, really, I, we're used to heavy regulation. I knew that when I got into this industry. I would just like to know if it is legal, if it's right, or if it's ethical for the city of Rapid City to be regulating us to this extent and then competing with us, which I think is a fair question. What I'm going to be asking for, and I'll be speaking with all of you over the next month, is I'm gonna ask you all individually that question, and should the city divest from any of its outdoor advertising and indoor advertising? Any advertising? Most cities don't do it the way you guys do it, and there are, in my mind, it should be put out for bid. I guess I don't mind, I don't mind the, well, I do mind it, but we've gotten used to the hand coming into our industry, and that is the hand of the city of Rapid City. I just ask...
used the code. That would be me, and then a guy from Rosenbaum's. The second meeting we had, of course, after being in, I believe, a 90-day moratorium, the mayor was kind enough through Joel Landin to say, you know what? The on-premise signs, we're not going to worry about them now. They were still stuck with a 90-day moratorium, though, on the eve of tourism season. This ordinance has been, or this recommendation is going to come to you through legal and finance, and then for your first and second reading. I only say that because, you know, the sign industry has been through this about every two years in the decade that I've been in the sign business. That is, either on a whim, or usually not more than a whim, we get thrown into a moratorium, we get put on a committee of, well, what I like to call a fair and balanced committee of sign haters, and then we run an ordinance up here to you to be rubber-stamped. I think it's time to maybe look at some other issues. So, that ordinance is coming to you, that committee is done. I'm looking to you tonight to set up another committee, and that is to inspect the other billboard company in town, and that is the city of Rapid City. The city of Rapid City owns the sign right down here on the corner that you're all aware of. It was put in largely with the assistance of then-councilman Hanks, who was the Civic Center liaison, and that sign, I believe, still has 500,000 worth of advertising per year hooked to it. Not to mention the exterior signage, the bus signage, the banners hanging throughout Rapid City, et cetera. So, I guess after, really, I, we're used to heavy regulation. I knew that when I got into this industry. I would just like to know if it is legal, if it's right, or if it's ethical for the city of Rapid City to be regulating us to this extent, and then competing with us, which I think is a fair question. What I'm going to be asking for, and I'll be speaking with all of you over the next month, is I'm going to ask you all individually that question, and should the city divest from any of its outdoor advertising and indoor advertising, any advertising? Most cities don't do it the way you guys do it, and there are, in my mind, it should be put out for bid. I guess I don't mind, I don't mind the, well, I do mind it, but we've gotten used to the hand coming into our industry, and that is the hand of the city of Rapid City. I just ask that it was clean hands that come into this industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. I do not have any additional speaker request forms under the general public comment period. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 3 through 187 inclusive, and please keep in mind, it also includes two items that were added to the agenda, 112A and 112B. The chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 3 through 163 inclusive and including 112A and 112B. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on any items, let's see, 3 through 163 inclusive, including 112A and 112B. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to any of these items? If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 3 through 163 inclusive and 112A and 112B. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar. These are items 3 through 154 inclusive, and does include item 112A and 112B. And the chair would ask if any of these items need to be pulled from the consent calendar, so please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Item 151.
Item 151. And let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Item 126 and 140, please.
140, got it? Any others? At this point, we're looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 3 through 154 inclusive, including 112A, 112P, and 112B, with the exception of items 126, 140, and 151. If we could have a motion, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item 126, and this is a public works item, and I will ask our chairman, Mr. Costello, to read that in, please.
Certainly. Item 126 is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for 2010 miscellaneous improvement project estimated cost $84,000, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this because I was looking for a rundown of what the, the projects are and where they are in the city. I've seen a map, but nothing specific to the highlighted areas.
Okay, I think we can go to Dale Tech, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if we can get the map brought up. I don't have the exact pinpoint locations, other than the map. I can give you a description, though, of what the projects consist of.
Alderman Costello, what's your?
Perhaps a general summary at first, Dale, and then I'll see if anything else.
Certainly. I guess an overview of a miscellaneous improvement program is a project to fix a lot of the minor issues that we find in the public rights of way. Primarily curb settlement, sidewalk issues as they relate to ADA crosswalks, and general pavement settlement, and also some pedestrian refuge-type projects. In this miscellaneous improvement project for this year, it looks like we've got six sites that have ADA improvements, primarily in the installation of ADA ramps at intersections, and then we have three areas that are replace asphalt pavement and repairing unstable subgrade, and one area where we've got a number of settled curbs that we'll be fixing that is beyond the capabilities of our street department.
Thank you very much. Dale, if I could, just have you then detail where the ADA sites are.
Mr. Tech?
If you'll bear with me just one moment, please.
Yeah, unless the website is not operating also. Mr. Mayor, I know there's a problem with the server that hosted that earlier. Do you know if that got resolved?
Dale? And for those in the audience, which can get this and put this up on the screen, I believe this is correct, we have been having problems with our server all day, so if need be, I think that we actually have the disk that we can load up, and our apologies, we've been having server problems, which is actually an off-site server. It's actually not the city of Rapid City, but one of our vendors. But Dale, is that the correct map? Okay.
As you can see by the map in front of you there, we've got nine sites identified. Site one is located southwest part of town off of Park Drive. I believe it's in the Meadowbrook area. That project consists primarily of settled curb that we'll be fixing, a number of spots along that portion of roadway. Site two is located in the center of the map there. I believe that's a ramp installation at Ninth and St. Patrick's Street. Site three is located down in the, I believe that's Woodridge area, I'm sorry, not Woodridge. Roadway just south of Catron off of Sheridan Lake Road. Once again, another curb replacement project in that area. Site number four appears to be located off of Knollwood Drive, not Knollwood, Foreman Street, rather, and I believe that is also a pavement settlement issue and a cul-de-sac that we'll be replacing. Site number five, located in the northeast part of town, looks like that is in the La Crosse Street area. I believe that's located just north of Eglin Street there. That will be for the installation of an ADA ramp. Site number six, located in the Disk Drive Maple Street area, once again, an ADA ramp Site seven, located right in front of the school of mine, St. Joe Street, once again, that'll be a pedestrian crosswalk improvement project there, consists of pavement marking as well as ADA ramp installation. Site number eight, located in the northern part of town there, believe that is Van Buren Street, once again, ADA ramp, as well as some sidewalk approach to that ADA ramp. And site number nine is located at West Maine and Sturtes Road, and that'll be for the installation of an ADA ramp as well.
Yep. Mr. Costello, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dale, for breaking that down. Site number eight, you know if that's, is that right near Horst Man School?
I believe that's in the area of General Beetle.
General, yes, General Beetle. Thank you for correcting me on that. Okay, the reason I ask was because I traveled by there earlier and noticed a couple curbs that definitely need ADA, especially as much as kids are biking to school these days. I really appreciate all your efforts in the Public Works Department to bring these curbs to ADA status, as more and more people are biking and walking to get places, especially as gas prices slowly rise, so we appreciate you getting ahead of that in many ways, so thanks, Dale.
Motion on the floor is for approval. We're dealing with item 126, please. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Dale, don't go too far. Item 140, and I would ask Alderman Costello, since item 140 and 151 are the same, let's take both those up at the same time. And so why don't you go ahead and read, go ahead and just read those in, and we'll take those in one motion.
Very well. Both items are to acknowledge the report and presentation of South Dakota Engineering Society Project of the Year Award to the city of Rapid City and Sea Tech Engineering for the Well 12 and Stony Creek Booster Station. I move for, to move to acknowledge the report.
We have a motion, second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure, I know quite a few aldermen have been able to tour this site, and I know that a few of the public are aware of how impressive this site is, but it certainly is worthy of these awards. Dale, would you have the ability to go through a few of the highlights for us? Okay, please do. Thank you.
I'll have to do this verbally, so. The Well 12 Stony Creek Booster Station is located off of Catron Boulevard, just to the east of Sheridan Lake Road. It consists of about an 1,800-foot-deep Madison well that is capable of producing about 1,900 gallons a minute of water. It also distributes, as part of the booster station, water to 90% of the city. It's interconnected through many of our seven pressure zones that we have. The site being adjacent to a residential area, it was important that the site was made architecturally attractive, so it blended in with the neighborhood. I believe that was done, if you drive by, typically, it looks more like a residential home rather than an industrial-type operation. As I said, the well, the deep well, it's got a backup generator capable of providing water to most of the city in case of a power outlet or power failure. Also, a unique process that was involved with the chlorination of the water was onsite chlorine generation, and that's done with regular salt and electricity, so we don't have the hazardous material, chlorine gas, that we're handling onsite, as well as putting our employees at risk moving that around. I guess those are some of the main components that are really unique about this project that we're very proud of.
Mr. Costello, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Dale, and it is a bummer that we couldn't get the presentation up one more time, simply due to the fact that, you know, we all rely on water for our day-to-day lives, and here, we have made this, excuse me, implemented this tremendous asset to our community, which has the ability to get fresh water, as you said, Dale, to 90% of the community. So, anytime there's an accident, whether it be, you know, regardless of what it is, we have the ability to make sure that our citizens have fresh water, and for the future of Rapid City, that's tremendously important. I really commend you in engineering, the whole department and Sea Tech, for your vision in this project and all your efforts. I know it wasn't the easiest, but hard engineering problems rarely are, so thanks again, Dale.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Just go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Thank you, Aaron. We did, he brought up 140 and 151 was the same, and I appreciate that. Well 12 was a big project for the west side for water, and I congratulate the Public Works Department and Sea Tech. It was a huge project. I also like to thank Dr. Bent. He gave that land to the city, and that was very nice of him as well. And also, the big issue there was water pressure, fire flow over there, and that opened up some major issues. So, you guys did a great job, and we really appreciate that. Water pressure, fire flow in Rapid City, in the last four or five years, we have improved many areas in Rapid City because of Public Works and their hard work at getting things done, so we appreciate all your work, and congratulations.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent items. These are items 155 through 163 inclusive. 155 through 163 inclusive. Chair would look for motion, actually, the chair would ask if any items 155 through 163 need to be pulled from the continued consent items. If so, please turn on your light. Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the continued consent items on the calendar, items 155 through 163 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items. These are items 164 through 187 inclusive. 164 through 187 inclusive will also include items 187A and B. Those are items that were added by aldermen. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 164 through 187 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I have no speaker request forms on any items 164 through 187 inclusive. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to any of these items? If not, chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 164 through 187 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to the non-consent items. We're going to start with items number, item 164, and Alderwoman Olson, could you please read that in?
Item 164, first reading of ordinance number 5614, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of the chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning within described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for rezoning from low-density residential district to general commercial district on property located at north of East Omaha Street between La Crosse Street and Racine Street. My motion is for, to table, it needs to be re-advertised.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to table. There's no discussion on tabling motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 165, please.
First reading of ordinance 5615, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for rezoning from low-density residential district to office commercial district on property located north of East Omaha Street between South Waterloo Street and Racine Street. My motion is to table, this one, this two needs to be re-advertised.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. There is no discussion on tabling motions. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 166, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 5610, and ordinance to remove the requirement to be a free holder for membership on the airport board by amending section 2.72.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 167, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 5611, to clarify the process for appointing members of the Historic Preservation Commission by amending section 2.68.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the Growth Management Department items, and item 168, please.
A request by Doug Noes for a preliminary plat on lots 1 and 2 of Noes Subdivision located at 1400 Philadelphia Street. Can I possibly be right? My motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. This is a preliminary plat where I, item 168. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 169, please.
A request by Finn Fisk, Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, for Daryl Johnson for a layout and preliminary plat on lots 14A and 14B of Lot 14 of Fay Reader Subdivision located at 9850 Sheridan Lake Road. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the layout and preliminary plat, approval with stipulations, item number 169. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about what
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about 168. Can we go back to that?
Let's deal with the motion on the floor, and then you can move to reconsider 168.
Thank you very much. I have no statement.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations. We're dealing with item number 169. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Karen, did you want to make a motion to reconsider item 168?
Well, if the address is wrong, it's Clark Street. Sorry, and when I read it, I knew it wasn't Philadelphia.
I tell you what, let's go ahead and, why don't you make a motion to reconsider, and we'll correct the record.
Make a motion to reconsider item number 168.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider item number 168. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Karen, could you please read in item number 168?
Request by Doug Noes for preliminary plat on lots 1 and 2 of Noes subdivision on property located at the terminus of Forest Hills Drive connecting with Clark Street, and my motion is for approval with stipulations.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 168, approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 170, please.
A request by DC Scott Company Land Surveyors for Jane and Delana Nelson for a layout plat on lots 1 and 2 of Nelson subdivision located at 13545 and 13555 Bittersweet Road. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. We're dealing with item number 170, which is a layout plat. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 171, please.
And a request for an event permit from the Dahl Art Center for Make-A-Splash art adventure to be held on June 5, 2010, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, dealing with item number 171. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 172, please.
A request for an event permit from the Pennington County Auditor's Office for parking, 10 spaces for polling purposes in front of the Rapid City Public Library at no cost to the voters on June 8, 2010, and November 2, 2010, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Chief Allender.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like we need to add a date to that also for June 29 for the special election. Is that the right date?
Yeah, may I just include it?
Yep.
I would include that, that date in my motion as well.
Better write with the seconder. Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion with the addition of the June 29 election? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 173, please.
Recommend setting a special city council meeting on June 9, 2010, at 12:30 p.m. to canvass the vote for the annual municipal election to be held on June 8, 2010. My motion is for approval, and Mr. Preston may have a comment.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Let's go to Mr. Preston, City Finance Officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Legal and Finance had recommended June 15 at my recommendation. Got an email this morning from the county auditor, based on the fact that this is a special election and that the ballots have to be available 15 days prior to a special election, which the bid election is a special election, and the concerns they had with provisional ballot, they asked if we could set this canvassing of the vote for Wednesday at 12:30 would work. They are going to look at the provisional ballots at 9 o'clock that morning, we'll get the information by 10, and then attorney, the city attorney's office needs to draft a resolution, and we would have that by 12:30, and so that is our recommendation.
You're talking about June 9?
June 9.
12:30, prior to Legal and Finance.
Pardon me?
Prior to Legal and Finance.
There's no Legal and Finance.
There's no Legal and Finance that week.
That's a council meeting.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, why can't we do it on the, I don't understand why we can't do it on the 15.
Mr. Preston.
Okay, thank you. The, the bid election is a special election, it's not a secondary election, and with a secondary election, we need to have the ballots out seven days prior. With a special, with the special elections, it's 15 days prior. The county is also concerned that we may get a number of provisional ballots, which may affect, you know, who is, who is on the runoff at the same time, and runoff election, and so not to avoid a possibility of some sort of printing the wrong ballots or whatever. They'd asked, it'd be June 9, and that made sense to me, that we do had, set that on June 9, if the council can make that date.
Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
So this is more about who might be in that runoff as opposed to the bid election itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Any further discussion? And the date is June 9 at 12:30. Let's go back to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Just say, I won't be here that day, but thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 174, please.
Recommend setting a special council meeting on July 6, 2010, at 6:30 p.m. to canvass the vote for the special election to be held on June 29, 2010. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? That is 6:30, just prior to a regular city council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 175, please.
Approve Resolution Number 2010-058 declaring property surplus. My motion would be for approval.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 175, which is a resolution to declare property surplus. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 176, please.
Authorize staff to advertise for bids for PRO 9-6008 Parkview Playground Project. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the staff to advertise for bids for Parkview Playground equipment. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
We had had some discussion about this on the Legal and Finance meeting, and I'm not against this project. I think the Parks Department has done a wonderful job out there at Parkview, the pool, the softball fields, and the tennis courts. The only thing that I'm looking at out there is not getting landlocked like we do, like we already are at the Star of the West complex. There's no easements on that property at this point for a second access, and there's also, at this point, they're saying there's enough parking spots, but there is a 2012 parking, or I'm sorry, a 2012 project, an ASA softball project coming up that wants three more fields out there. So it looks like, based on what I've seen at the Star of the West, that we're headed for the same issues as we have at the Star of the West. There's no second access, there's no easements, and parking spots. We just ordered in, got some tennis courts out there. The school and the city both helped pay for those, but they didn't have enough funding to do the parking spaces. So I know this project is not a bad project, but I would ask the council if they look forward and look ahead, and hopefully the Parks Department at getting those easements and not putting us in another predicament where we're paying $300,000 to $400,000 that we don't have to get a second access for that road. So again, just giving a little heads up, let's be aware of what we're putting for projects on our own property. We are no different than the citizens of Rapid City when they are putting projects forth that need second accesses and enough parking for their activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share some of council members' hadcock's concern about the secondary access and the availability of parking, but I don't think that the two have to be exclusive. I think that we can still pass this to authorize the staff to authorize, to advertise for bids for the playground equipment, and at the same time, challenge the Parks Department and the city to start that conversation with the school district whenever, if they ever build a school out there, that today we start that conversation about where should a secondary access be. So I don't think that they have to, one has to necessarily fight the other. I agree with you about the potential of what that could look like in the future, but at the same time, I think we could approve this tonight and then still start the discussion about secondary access, and we should start that discussion.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too understand that it, one of the concerns is that, I mean, I think we can prove this item tonight and hold it separately than, than having an easement across that school land, because if they sell the school land and there's no easement, then the city will be held captive for a second access into that. I mean, it was obvious, when they built the tennis courts, the school said that they were going to have parking available. They since changed their mind on that, built the tennis courts anyway, and didn't build the parking, so I think it would behoove them to give us an easement through that land so we have it available, so when the future, some future council's not faced with a $300,000 or $400,000 bill getting an easement through that piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. We're dealing with item 176. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 177, please.
Authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amended agreement between the City of Rapid City and SYB Incorporated to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for Big Sky subdivision Phase 10. My motion is to send back to Legal and Finance.
We have a motion and a second to send this back to Legal and Finance. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 178, please.
Authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amended agreement between the City of Rapid City and 3T's Land Development LLC to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for Minnesota Ridge subdivision Phase 2. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Dealing with item number 178. Let's go to Marsha Alkins. Go ahead.
Item 177 through 182, there was discussion at committee. We were asked to go back and ensure that each of these lots were buildable. The reason for the request to send back 177 to committee is there's one lot that is not. We need to revise the agreement to address that. The other items that are here, 178 on, that are related sidewalk agreements, those all have buildable lots where there are sidewalks still needed.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? There again, motion on the floor is dealing with items number 179, correct? 178? 178.
178.
And that motion is to send back to Legal and Finance, item number 170.
We did that one already.
I just asked him.
Yeah.
Amber, you're messing me up here.
We're on 178.
Okay, we're on item, okay, motion on, item number 178 is to approve. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion?
I have that, sorry, Mayor, on my calendar, on my form, it's 179. Am I wrong?
Oh.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm in agreement. It's 178.
Okay, we're on item number 178, motion is for approval.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Now, item number 179.
Authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amended agreement between the City of Rapid City and 3T's Land Development LLC to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for Minnesota Ridge subdivision Phase 3. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval, dealing with item number 179. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 180.
Authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amended agreement between the City of Rapid City and 3T's Land Development LLC to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for Minnesota Ridge subdivision Phase 4B. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, item number 180. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 181, please.
Authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amended agreement between the City of Rapid City and 3T's Land Development LLC to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for lots 9A and 9B of Robbinsdale Edition Number 10. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 182.
A request for the Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amended agreement between the City of Rapid City and Signature LLC to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for Velagio at Golden Eagle subdivision. My motion is for approval.
A motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the Public Works Committee items, items number, item number 183, and Mr. Costello, if you could please read that in.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Item 183 is a request to eliminate on-street parking from Jackson Boulevard near Mountain View Road due to intersection reconstruction, and to schedule a special city council meeting within 60 days.
The recommendation would be to continue this item for two weeks, as we have had some discussions with the state DOT.
Okay, I will move to continue this item for two weeks.
We have a motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks. Any discussion on the continuation motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson. Do you want to talk on the continuation motion?
I'm in support of the continuation.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker on the continuation motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Relating to the continuation motion, could the city council make, possibly be asked to make a decision in two weeks? Yes or no? And if, and if so, we need to make sure that all the folks that were here at the meeting the other day that thought there would be a separate public hearing, you know, know about that. So I guess I would, I think it's fair to ask the continu, as part of the continuation motion, you know, what, what, what discussion has taken place, and what are we going to hear in two weeks?
Very good. Fair question. Two things, had a discussion with Todd Seaman of the DOT. There were some recommendations by some of the adjacent property owners, and I asked the DOT to take a look and get back to the city to see if they were achievable as far as designing, designing the intersection in, in the means, or in the, really, in the layout that they're proposing. And just for point of notice, we did have staff contact, the adjacent property owners. They knew that we're going to move to have it continued for two weeks, and we will certainly make sure that we contact them ahead of time and give them the heads up. Same with the council.
I, if I could just make one more comment, and that is, is I, the reason I, the reason I asked for a, a separate meeting was because of the extensive discussion that, that no matter what we do, there would be extensive discussion with multiple landowners wanting to speak, and I was hoping that to streamline the process, it would be better to have a separate meeting, but we'll see what happens in two weeks, but at that time, you know, if there's a motion to, to recommend approval and there's still significant disagreement from the landowners, then I will still ask for that special meeting to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock. There again, the motion on the floor is a continuation motion, so if we could please limit discussion to that. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Maybe you know the answer, Mayor. If this is a DOT project and we vote on it, I mean, it's a state project, so how are we going to vote on something, decide something, and then come back and have the DOT make sure they take our recommendation?
Under, and I can answer that question. Under state statute, any municipality over $60,000, the, the state DOT, irregardless if it's a state route, must get the approval of the governing body to remove parking from a state route.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer.
You're certainly welcome. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in answer to my colleagues, several colleagues' questions, in addition to staff, those of us in Ward 3 have been in contact with the prop, adjacent property owners and they're, they understand the continuation motion and they are supportive of continuing conversations that would take a serious look at anything that would seriously jeopardize the value of their property. Thank you. And so, I'm in support of the continuation motion.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, if I understood Alderman Quaker, that's concerned about still a special meeting and the council potentially making a decision, my understanding of what we're doing is not only continuing the discussion, but also continuing to put off that the 60-day special meet, I mean, the special meeting would happen as well. So, that's going to happen regardless. We're not going to make a decision. The special meeting is still us, part of this motion, continuation.
Yep. Everyone clear in the motion? The motion is to continue this item for two weeks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Preston, bids, please.
We have three items on the bid summary this evening. Item number 184 is the Eglin Street Extension Project. We received five bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from True Form Construction for Schedule 1, Schedule 2, Schedule 1 Bid Alternate 1, and Schedule 1 Bid Alternate E1. The total of those four items is $1,181,594.51.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to True Form Construction, Schedule 1, Schedule 2, Alternate 1, and Alternate E1 for a grand total of $1,181,594.51. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
The next item is Easy Street Sanitary Sewer Extension. Received four bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Rapid Construction, amount of $143,855.41.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid to Rapid Construction for a grand total of $143,855.41. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
The last item, item number 186, is Noelwood Drainage Outfall Elements 2 and 20. We received six bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from RCS Construction Incorporated, amount of $2,120,216.30.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to RCS Construction for a grand total of $2,120,216.30. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just one thing, people running for election that are not thinking that we're spending enough on infrastructure as a city, elected officials or otherwise, there's a $2 million project, 2, 5, plus a lot of the other bids that we are doing in Rapid City for streets, drainage, sewer projects. We are spending a lot of taxpayer dollars on infrastructure and I think the Public Works Department is doing a great job of getting those done. Curb cuts we've heard tonight, ADA cuts, I think the city's doing a great job. It seems like, I think, a lot of times, this isn't put out in the public enough, how much money we actually do spend on infrastructure for the citizens of Rapid City. We are doing an awesome job. You can always spend more because there's always more to do, but thank you, Public Works. You guys have been getting things done for us and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is for approval and to award to RCS Construction for a grand total of $2,120,216.30. Got that, Emily? There's a heavy hint for a story. Yeah, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, that does take us to items from council and liaison reports. We're on to item number 187. This is off-street parking on the 600 block of St. Cloud Street and it is put on the agenda by Alderman Quaker. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Normally, I would wait until a Public Works meeting to bring something like this up, but this came to me after the Public Works meeting the other day and I understand that this may be time-sensitive. I'm just going to read these, these two emails into the record. The first is from Steve Bridge of 620 St. Cloud. Dear Mr. Quaker, I write today to ask that I keep my driveway here on St. Cloud, please. It was original to my house in the 1950s and approved in the 60s, improved in the 60s. The traffic on St. Cloud is heavy and keeping my driveway is important for safety reasons for myself, for guests and company, some elderly when they visit. I and everyone living on this stretch of St. Cloud have had a car totaled while parked on the street. It was a terrible experience. Thank you for your time, Steve. Second one is from Richard Miners of 624 St. Cloud and this one sent to Alderwoman Hadcock and myself. It says, "It has been brought to my attention that the city is going to eliminate the parking in front of my neighbor Steve Bridge's house at 620 St. Cloud Street. If you check your records, I have made many complaints to the police department of neighbors' parking unsightly vehicles in front of my house. Eliminating three parking spots next to my house would just compound this problem. If you check further back in your records, my sister Emily Miners ate her when she lived here at 624 St. Cloud Street. Her car was hit and run at least twice when she lived here in the 70s. The street is dangerous, dangerous enough between Boyd's Liquors and Star Village. People drive like it's an expressway in front of my house as it is. And if you would take the time to do the math, account for the eliminate, elimination of boulevard parking even on one side of the street and see how many vehicles that would put on the street, it's going to make St. Cloud a one-lane racetrack. I'm asking for the record, do not eliminate boulevard parking on St. Cloud Street." It probably makes sense to continue this. I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that the parking's not eliminated between now and then and so that this, this situation can be looked into and resolved. Thank you.
Okay, let's, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Actually, today, talked to Richard and me and Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director, went in the alley of St. Cloud and caught Steve, one of the guys that has, wrote the letter here. And we're looking at the issues on that street for boulevard parking. And if we can take this back to Public Works for two weeks, we want to have some conversations with Dale Tech and Robert Ellis about boulevard parking in general, not just St. Cloud. And so, my recommendation, if I could, is to continue this back to Public Works for two weeks, please.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to place this on the Public Works agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much of a problem with this except for the fact of having such a large curb cut. There was a fellow that had a, a three-car driveway in Red Rock and we made him reduce his curb cut to two cars and he had a full, full-length driveway all the way up to his house. So, I just want to, as we have these discussions, I want to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to have places on the Public Works agenda for the next meeting. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We also have a 187A, which is a 2012 update. Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, just give a quick update on the process of 2012. The process is still moving along. I met last week with all three of the committees, the Civic Improvement, Economic Development, and Municipal Infrastructure Committees, and they are working hard reviewing all those projects. Letters went out to all of the applicants last week with the public hearing dates. I think, in fact, I know they were published, or four of the six dates were published in the Journal over the weekend on Sunday. And just a, a big thank you to the city attorney's office, in particular Mike Shad and Jason Green for reviewing all 31 of those projects and coming up with some identifying information as to where those projects should fit into the, the public hearings. And then, thank you to Amber for all the work she did out of the finance office. And then, thank you to Trudy in the mayor's office for all the work that she's done. The council members should receive this information from their committee chairs and the public hearings will start on Wednesday, the 26th of May. That'll be economic development and I think emails have gone out to everyone and those, that information is published in the newspaper as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we need a vote on that. It was just information only. We'll move to item number 187B, which is status of the refund to the South Valley area. And Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if we had a status.
Let's see, let's go to Mr. Preston.
What, what was the question again?
The question is, a status report on where we're at as far as the council's vote to refund the application fees and the Melody Acres.
Melody Acres, okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, the last two weeks, Mr. Green and myself sat down several times and took a look at this, see if there was some way that we could legally use city funds to make these refunds. We were not able to come up with that. Therefore, I did ask Mr. Green to provide a legal opinion to me, which he did provide a written opinion on Friday. And today, I drafted out a letter to the council. Essentially, the gist of the letter is that I did ask this for opinion and that the opinion essentially says it was illegal and I'm not going to do anything illegal. Therefore, I have directed my staff not to process any payments for a refund. And I also sent an email to Mr. La Croix and Mr. Chapman to give them a heads up as to what my intentions were. And I did keep the mayor informed during this process.
Very good. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor still.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just offer a motion to continue this item to Legal and Finance and ask that the opinion and pertinent information be linked.
Yep. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to place this on the Legal and Finance Committee agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still not convinced that what we didn't, what we did was legal, so I'd like to see if we're going to link something, just have an opinion on, on, on that whole process that took place because I think that, though typically, these aren't city funds. I think that there would be an argument made that what we did was, was not legal. The process wasn't properly handled. It didn't, the process wasn't complete. I looked at some of the applications myself. They were incomplete. I think that that should be part of the opinion. I thought that we made that clear, but I guess not.
Yep, very good. Motion is to actually place the item on Legal and Finance agenda. Further, further discussion? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that the opinion I've given to the finance officer is a communication between attorney and client. Without a waiver, I don't feel comfortable linking that to the agenda. However, I would be happy to provide hard copies to each member of the council.
Okay, if you make sure that it happens. So, your preference is to give hard copies? Okay, we'll get that in everybody's boxes tomorrow morning. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I guess I'm with Mr. Wyfembach on the process and procedure since, again, I did go through that. We did look at the papers. It didn't seem like the process on both sides was filled out like it was supposed to, to be legal. In that case, I, I still will call it a mistake with full disclosure, these people, again, wouldn't have voted for this, wouldn't let this happen, wouldn't let this bring this this far forward. And again, who's accountable? I did call it on the city, city council fees or call it whatever you want. That was a bad thing to say because it had nothing in our sense, in the bottom line, to do with accountability for just the city council. If you were in charge of your department and this gets this far through on a PRD and there's not full disclosure, there's got to be somebody that's accountable. So, again, we looked at the process, we looked at the procedure that was, went through with the applicants. Only, out of six of those, four needed it, or, I'm sorry, out of six of those, only two needed that PRD. And we put those PRDs on these people and charged them money, which ended up being, in this case, the process wasn't filled out right. We charged them cash for 250 to, what's, 270 each? And now, we can't give their money back. And I still believe, again, that it wasn't legal. These fees should have been taken back out of the growth management and given back to the people because the procedure, I believe, was not followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the motion is to actually place the item on the Legal and Finance Committees. And so, if we could try and discuss that part of the motion, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're talking about process and procedure. I guess I have a question. The council had discussion about this item. This item has come before the council. The council voted, however the council voted. Our finance officer, through an opinion from our city attorney, said what the council approved, in their opinion, was illegal. So, and our city attorney just said that he doesn't feel comfortable divulging that information that he's giving to his client, the city council, at a public meeting or linking it to a public agenda. My question is this, what are we, what are we having discussion about? We've already discussed this item, we voted on it. Is some action, does the council plan to take some action to say that we're going to overturn what our finance, I mean, what's the point of putting this item back on a Legal and Finance agenda if we can't link the item, the letter? So, what's the point? We've already had extensive discussion on this.
Okay, very good. And I just asked Jason Green, our city attorney, a question and that was, if the city council so chose, they can waive the client attorney privilege and actually link it. And Jason's response is, he didn't have any problem with doing that. If you'd like to make that motion tonight, we can do that and that way, it can be linked prior to the Legal and Finance Committee meeting. Jason, did I miss anything there?
The only thing I might suggest is the council might want to review the communication before you decide whether to waive the privilege or not, but that's certainly within the discretion of the council.
Okay. Would you have that available tonight if we so choose to, to take that up in executive session?
I might be able to get that, get copies of it tonight.
Okay. Let me just make a suggestion. If, if the council would like to do that, we can actually move this item to the end of the agenda and come back out and decide, and take the vote on linking that after we've had a chance to review it. If not, we can certainly take the vote now. Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for our city attorney. We put this item back on the agenda, if we waive the privilege and all, to, to what end? So, what happens then? I mean, are we just going to talk about this item again and rehash all the information again and, and vote again? I mean, what's, so, putting it on an agenda, linking the item, is to what end if the opinion of the city attorney and our finance officer is not going to change? Are we just having discussion or is this just an information item to show the public what our city attorney has said?
So, to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Well, I'm not sure that's really a question for me. It's probably a question for your fellow council members. I'm not sure what the end is here. But, you know, if you vote to waive the, the attorney-client privilege with regard to the communication, that can certainly be made available to the public.
Okay, Mr. Chapman.
I, I think I asked the question to the right person, the city attorney. And with the council being copied on my comments right here, so, is there something that the city council can do? Some action that the city council can take in light of what your opinion is and what our finance officer has said? Is there some legal action that the city council can take? And if not, then I'm saying, what's the point?
Go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only way the action could be legal is if you identified a funding source that wasn't public dollars.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chapman, anything else?
Not necessarily the, how to pay it, but I'm saying, does the city council have recourse in light of where we are now? If, if all things staying the same? Is there any rec, what's the city council's next move other than linking it to an agenda and then having it out there?
Mr. Green.
I think that might be a discussion for executive session.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. If this does go back to Legal and Finance or even if we discuss it later on tonight, the one question I'd have was for a finance officer is Herb Teal was one of the applicants that had to pay a fee for a PRD for Melody Acres and he was refunded money. So, I guess, how can we do it for one and not the rest of them?
Did you want to ask that question, Alren? Mr. Kroger? Did you want to ask that of Mr. Preston now?
If you have to.
Let's go to Mr. Preston or Marcia Alkins.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. My, my response to that would be, is after the last meeting, I did go back and take a look and there were a, several refunds that were made. However, if those were made in error, it doesn't mean that I'm going to do something intentionally illegal now. And I guess that's my, what I understand.
Let's go to Marcia Alkins.
The practice has been if an applicant submits a request and they, we've not published the item, we've not circulated the item, at that point in time, we would refund those application fees if they were to withdraw it. Subsequent to the action on the Teal request, I've been advised by the city attorney's office to no longer follow that process.
Mr. Kroger, you still have the floor.
Well, I, I am a little confused by the answer. I mean, you know, Mr. Teal, the response I got from Mr. Preston, I guess I wasn't clear what he was trying to relay, but, you know, the bottom line is, the individuals that But, you know, the bottom line is, the individuals that we're trying to get a refund for had nothing more done than Mr. Teal, and he got a refund. And they did pay for notification. That was a fee that was, they paid for. The city has not paid one penny, not one penny of what's been, what we've taken from those people. And I don't know why we cannot pay back people the money that they paid. There's no city funds involved at all. The only city funds, and we haven't got to that discussion, would be is if we were to pay them back the mailing. And my understanding is someone's already paid them for that. So, the bottom line is the dollars we're talking about are not city tax dollars. They're dollars paid by those individuals, and they certainly should be able to have a refund. Thank you.
Marsha, did you have a comment?
Yes. The only time that we've refunded application fees is when they were submitted and no action was taken on it, meaning that they were, there was no legal ad placed in the newspaper, there was no process that went beyond. They're submitting an application, and typically, it happens within a few days of that application being submitted.
Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I would really like to see us go ahead and just release the opinion. And in terms of the argument of attorney-client privilege being waived, and it's already been waived in the sense that the substance of the opinion was released here openly, that it's the opinion of the city attorney that this can't be done. So, release the opinion, so that way, I don't have to explain to the folks that call me with, you know, regarding what the reasoning was, without then being told myself that I violated attorney-client privilege. So, let's just release the, let's just release the opinion. Let's not spend a lot of time discussing it tonight. And by the time it gets to legal and finance, people can digest it. And then if we need to hire outside counsel to take another look at it, because this is larger than the $700 that's at stake here, there's a larger issue here, then the council could decide to do that. So, the intent of my motion to continue is that we link, we link the information and the opinion. And it's my opinion that attorney-client privilege has, in a sense, already been waived because the city attorney announced the opinion on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be for Jason Green.
Go ahead, please.
Jason, if we deemed that this process, any process, was illegal, or it didn't follow the process of the ordinance, would that not allow us to give them their money back?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
No.
So, we can just, I guess, Mr. Mayor, so we can just, this is incredible. Whatever, you guys do what you want.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jason, did you have any additional comments? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. If the written opinion that I've given to Mr. Preston is to be released, I need the waiver from the council. It's just a simple motion to waive the attorney-client privilege, you vote on it, and then it's done, then I don't have to worry about having violated the rules of professional conduct. None of the aldermen have to worry about any issues with discussing matters that are subject to the privilege. That's the right way to do this. But again, I would encourage you to hold off on any decision on that until after executive session.
Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
That would be my, is that amendment to the motion, Mayor?
You, I would suggest making amendment.
Okay, that'd be my amendment.
And the amendment is to have the council waive the privilege and to link the opinion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jason, is that appropriate? Okay, very good. Do we have a second? We have a motion, second. Discussion on the amendment only, please. We're going to talk about strictly the amendment. Alderman Chapman, did you want to talk about the amendment?
I do.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I don't disagree that we should release that information, but I don't understand the haste. If we're talking about releasing that information after executive session tonight, why wouldn't we want to at least see what it says in its totality before we release that information? I think it's bad practice. I agree, we should release the information, but we should read it first. I will not vote for the amendment, but I am in favor of releasing the information. I just think the process that we're using to release it, to get to that end, is not like the council should be taking.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
My question is for Jason.
Okay, go ahead.
By releasing, allowing this release, we are only allowing the correspondent or the opinion on this particular issue. We are not waiving all attorney-client privilege, are we?
Let's get that from Mr. Green. I believe that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understand the motion, it is specific to the memo that I provided to Mr. Preston.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I thought we were going to put the, his waiver of attorney-client privilege on the next legal and finance, and that's where the discussion was going to be.
The motion is to actually put the item, the discussion, on legal and finance, but the amendment deals with being able to link the memo from our city attorney to the city council in waiving that privilege. So, it's an amendment. So, if you vote for the amendment, what will happen is we'll go back to the amended motion, and the amended motion would be to place the item on the legal and finance and to waive the attorney-client privilege and link that for the city, for the city legal and finance committee.
Yes, not tonight.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Everyone clear on the motion? We're dealing with the amendment. All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Now, we're to the motion as amended. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I understood what Deb was asking. So, we're actually saying, before we even read it, we're saying that that item should be linked to the next agenda. Is that correct? Is that correct? I'm asking our city attorney. And I just ask a question, just as a matter of course, for the council. Why would we not wait and at least read it in executive session and then come back out here and do that? What's the haste that an hour or two hours, or however long our meeting goes tonight? What's the haste to do it before you even see it?
Did you want to ask that of anyone?
Asking of the council.
Okay, very good. Further discussion, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Do you continue?
Okay, we have a substitute motion, and that is to take this item to the end of the agenda. Discussion on that motion. Now, this is a continuation motion to the end of the agenda, so we will deal strictly with that motion. I've seen no lights. Anyone wish to speak? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes with one no from Alderman Wyfembach. This will be placed at the end of the agenda after the executive session. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. We will move on to the public hearing items. These are items 188 through 262 inclusive. 188 through 262 inclusive. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 88 through 162 inclusive.
No.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We do have open comments, and I do have some speaker request forms. I have one from Robert Hatch, item 201. Item 201. There again, Mr. Hatch, just a reminder, we do time this. You'll have three minutes. So, when you come up to the podium, just identify yourself for the record. And then, as the lights turn yellow and red, just, if you could just wind up your remarks. The floor is yours, sir.
My name's Robert Hatch, and we were at the last council meeting on May 3rd about the rezoning of 229 Lindbergh Avenue, so I can build some more apartment buildings there. And I had, I brought a list of homeowners that were opposed to it. And LaCroix, he was supposed to, he said he was going to contact homeowners, and I don't know if he ever did or not on the issue. But the problem is, on that one single block there, there's like eight multi-story apartment buildings there. And I guess, I'm opposed to another one being built there because I feel there's enough there. And the main issue I have is, besides the traffic and things like that, is on North Boundary, there's a Stonecrest Apartments on North Boundary on my property there, and there is no alleyway running between the property lines, so there is no buffer zone there. And we've had lots of issues with tenants there in apartment buildings and things like that. And I don't know, I just feel that instead of building another apartment building, I guess the lots are zoned for like single-family homes. I guess, my opinion is, instead of building another apartment building there that would benefit developers, maybe they could put some Habitat Humanity homes there that benefit low-income people, though, so they can own their own homes and stuff like that. I feel that better, that'd be better for the neighborhood and stuff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Sam, did you, it is, Cara, did you want to?
Well, and like my husband said, we've been there 10 years. We purchased that home after looking at several areas of the city because of where it was. And it was low-density zoned all around us, except for the one apartment building that we had no control over. It was there. My fear is that you'll change that one lot, those two lots, to medium density, and then the next two lots right next to me will be medium density. And the next thing you know, I don't have nothing but apartment buildings around me. And that's not why I bought my property. Thank you.
Very good. Say, Marsha, just so you know, and I'll give you a heads up, the recommendation is to actually continue this item to the June 7th. And were we not able to get ahold of the hatchets today?
I believe we left a message on their answering machine.
Right, well, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, I know staff was supposed to contact you and let you know that we're going to continue. I just want to make sure that happened.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, we also have a speaker request form from Deb Baker, item number 255. Did you need to put something up or as far as?
How can you put that up?
How big is it? Probably not.
When we were here last.
Deb, do me a favor. If you would identify yourself for the record, and then go ahead and start, if you would, please.
My name's Deb Baker. I live at 325 St. Duma Road in Rapid.
You know, Deb, we're having a hard time. Can you pull that mic up to you? For some reason, we're not getting much.
There.
I think that's better. Thank you.
There. She moved that. We were here a few weeks ago regarding these apartments. As you guys are aware, per the future land use plan from 2008, the city made a commitment to protect neighborhoods against excessive high-density residential apartments. We fill five more buildings with 60 more units is beyond excessive. The other excessive factor here is the crime rate at those apartments. The police have been called over 157 times in one year. That averages to more than two calls per household. Most of us don't have the cops at our house two times in our lifetime. If you build 60 more units, you can expect that to increase by 60 percent. Who gets to pay for that? Who's going to pay for that? The citizens? Do we have enough police to do this? I don't think we do. Those, this is the police report that we polled. You guys were supposed to get that. Did you, do you know if you've got the police report? This is from one year, you guys. This is just the apartments. This is not a five-block area. This is those apartments. I have grandbabies that wait for a bus at a bus stop across the street from them. It scares me to death. This is one year. Does this not concern you guys? This is our neighborhood. These sort of statistics devalue our homes, and they degrade our neighborhood. You know, there isn't one of us here that don't agree that we probably need more income-based housing. But when you put that many in that small of an area, what do you think's going to happen? When you have that many low-income people in one area, what do you think's going to happen? I do this for a living, you guys. I manage 700 units throughout this state, and this is the toughest type of housing there is. But when you put that many together, all in one place, you're going to have trouble. If you could do 16 in an area, or 24 in an area where you don't have 150 units of people that are all feeding on each other's misery, it's crazy. We just ask that you at least, we respectfully ask that you guys deny this application until at least they can get the crime rate under control. That's what we ask. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Bob Drew, item 255.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bob Drew. I'm with the Eagle Ridge Apartments, one of the owners there. I guess I just want to kind of take a few minutes to talk about a few, a couple of things. First, it's kind of our understanding that our PRD was originally approved for 148 units. We put 96 up, we had 52 left. And this major amendment is really about six units. Okay? And so, but, there's good news. Because that has, you know, basically introduced us to quite a few neighbors. We've worked with Jay and Jenna and Mark, and we had neighborhood meetings, and, you know, I guess I never really saw, a couple of, the Bakers never showed up at our meetings, but they're here now, so that's, I'm glad they're here. But, anyway, so I guess we're talking about another six units. We think it's a positive event because we've bettered the landscaping, we've bettered the retaining walls, we've bettered the fence between the properties. So, you know, we look at, we look at it like that. We're trying to do our best to be good neighbors. We understand that it's a dense project. Our property manager calls the police when there's a problem up there. She actually is proactive to call the police to make sure this doesn't get out of control. We don't want to have things going on in our apartments. We don't need, we don't need, you know, methamphetamine-type stuff going on. We don't need that stuff either. So, she calls them, and she makes sure they come out. And she's friends with them. And we started a neighborhood watch program in our neighborhood. Okay? So, we're doing some things to help be proactive about this. Mary Bosworth called the other day. She wanted to make sure we were taking care of some, you know, some erosion control issues. We haven't been able to get on site. I've hired a landscaping company to get out there and take care of it. It's been muddy, but they're going to be there the first day that they can to take care of some issues, some drainage issues that we're having out there. So, you know, we're doing our best. I guess, I wanted to just kind of also say that, you know, I thank you for the support you've given us for this affordable housing project. It takes a lot to bring the elements of this together. I mean, there is, there's just the kind of things that I've worked on and my partners have worked on for three years here to build an affordable complex. Everything from land to zoning to tax credits and syndication, took us three years to get the credits from the state. We're here to get another six units because the numbers had to expand a bit to make it, to make this work and to make it affordable. We use home funds, we use tax credits, we got TCAP money, which is TARP money through the TARP stuff that came from President Bush. We're involved with the HUD in the application, taking some permanent financing. There's architects, there's engineers, there's builders. This creates jobs for our city. It's a, it's a, it's a big project. It's taken some time to get it here in front of you. I'm here to ask for your support tonight so we can continue to move forward with our Phase Two. So, thank you for your time, and again, thank you for support.
Thank you, Ms., thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Maureen Ward, item 255.
Good evening. I'm Erin Ward. I live at 306 St. Duma Road. It's, as we used to say, kitty corner from.
Hope, can somebody give her a hand there, Marsha? We'll get that up for you, and then we'll start your time over. Okay.
I live kitty corner from this. Is that right?
I moved it on you.
There we go. On May 13th, staff noted that the stipulations of approval have been met. Landscaping is in place as required. Erosion and sediment control measures have been installed for Phase One. Erosion control, and yes, I realize it's been muddy. How long has this been like this? How long has Phase One been complete? Look at that. That's what I see out my front window every day. Look at that. That's what I see out my front window every day. City ordinance 837020, erosion and sediment control measures. All sites, including but not limited to construction sites, vacate lots or homes without landscaping, shall maintain erosion and sediment control measures to prevent soil from going off-site to public rights of way where soil can be readily re-entered. City ordinance. That's Stumer, that I just had up there. This is Stumer. This is in the back of their parking lot, and yes, they do have a retaining wall. Not very effective, but they have one. Curbside, young children noted playing in the mud, which is always fun. City ordinance 17 dot 50 dot 3,000 landscape regulations state orderly, safe, healthful, attractive. Now, that one can't see very well. There's a big old honking dent inside of the wall. I requested from Mr. Drew, and he obliged that there, they placed some more garbage receptacles, because they were frequently overflowing, I noted. Hmm. Got one there. Not surrounded by the required 3 opaque walls. Do not park. Here's another one of those receptacles. Is that safe and healthy? Section C of the city landscape ordinance 17 point 50 point 300 definitions, undeveloped area. All undeveloped areas must have a sufficient cover of hardy native plant materials or grass.
Ms. Ward, that would be time, so if you could just wrap up here, I appreciate it.
All right, all right. Section E of the city ordinance, the landscape requirements, planner islands. I'm not sure what those are, but I know they aren't there. Erosion control measures are ineffective, presently ineffective, require consideration. My suggestion would be higher retaining walls, adjusted grade soil amendment to encourage vegetation-friendly environment. I am a certified master gardener. This soil is not vegetation-friendly. I thank you so much.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Mark, is it Stolkin?
Yep.
Okay. There again, Mark, if you'd identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, sir. Item 255. Sorry, everyone.
I'm Mark Stolkin. I live at 307 Enchantment Road. I live kitty corner to Maureen. And my property, my property borders the vacant lot that they want to put Phase 2 next to. Honestly, I'm torn between two things, as far as the opposition, so there really wasn't a halfway in-between, check Mark, in your speaker request form. Obviously, we see the, all the erosion and everything else that affects our, our land, and my neighbors down the road that spill off into the street. Ultimately, we'd like to see the provisions that the city has put up, as far as trees, fences, and everything else like that. Bob Rich and all the, all the other developers have agreed to put those up. We obviously like to see those, but on the flip side, the apartment buildings, I guess if I had a choice, I would never have wanted those there in the first place, for obvious reasons. More apartments, I really don't want, but have to flip a coin and decide which parts we want. This is also, there's also parts that bleed over into the Walmart thing, which is obviously a super, super bigger thing than this is, but it's associated with it, and causes more concern about how that's going to affect, how these apartments affect, how they, they're going to coincide with each other. So, where I'm standing, where I'm standing with it, we'd like to see the landscaping, wouldn't like to see the apartments, so take it as that's my opinion. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Jay Alderman, item 255.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I too feel, I guess, kind of between a rock and a hard spot. My neighbor, Mark, is right next to me. We both face this proposed Phase 2 property. We're going on our fifth summer of looking at what you saw, the pictures here. Arguably, my property is perhaps the most directly affected of all the properties up and down Stumer. A lot of those pictures you saw are coming right off the corner of my property. I was here a couple months ago or so, and had mentioned that there's some erosion issues that I went through last spring and summer. And I did appreciate it, Rich was here, and I believe Bob was here as well. And within just a few days to a week, we had some folks out there, and they put in some erosion socks, all the way up to full length of my property. And this most recent heavy snow we had, and the rain that followed it, we didn't have those erosion issues. We, we didn't have any mud that washed into our, our landscaping, our yard. So it did work. It helped. The rock and a hard spot that I'm in, is just as Mark described, and I can't fault anyone that's been here to show those pictures. It's a fact. It's, if there weren't any apartments there, boy, I'd be a happy camper right now. But I'm, I'm living with it. I want to see landscaping. It's my understanding, and I spoke with the city this morning, that if this project were not approved, there would be no landscaping along our properties required. What you see in those photographs, and what I look out my window each day and see would remain there, the word that was given to me was essentially forever. The only thing that I could complain about is if erosion became a problem. If the socks that are there now became corroded with mud and overflowed in my yard, I could voice my concern, and they'd have to maybe replace them, and so forth. But there'd be no landscaping there. Probably not even any seeding. The dirt would remain to be there essentially forever. So that's, that's what I've been told, and so that's what I'm operating on here. And so the rock and the hard spot is that, do I want more apartment complexes? Of course not. No one in that, in that area wants that. Do I want the landscaping that we have, in fact, worked together? And that is true when Mr. Drew was up here, and he said some of the neighbors, we've spent several years, frankly, talking and trying to get something done with that landscaping. We feel we have a reasonable plan worked out, if this were to all go through, with some pine trees, the retaining wall, and then the privacy fence. And we appreciate that wholeheartedly. But it's my understanding that unless this goes through, we don't get any of that. And I'll be blunt and honest with you, I don't have the money to do that myself. That property will sit there and look like that. So, do I support the landscape idea? Absolutely. Do I understand, from what I was told today from the city, that it comes with the apartments? I guess I understand that, too. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay. I have no further speaker request forms. Does anyone else in the audience that has not spoken wish to speak to any items, and we are dealing with, items 188 through 262 inclusive? Go ahead. Go ahead and come up and identify yourself for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Kurt Hughes. I'm with Forefront Design, and we're the engineers who did the, the plans and specs for the site design of Eagle Ridge. I just wanted to make a couple comments, and I apologize for not doing a speaker request, but I thought I warranted coming up and explaining a couple of things. That, we've designed and approved erosion and sediment control plan as part of the Phase 2 plans. We've, and that will be installed when Phase 2 is, is in place. That erosion control that, that was shown in the photos is, you know, part of the Phase 1 plan, but that'll all be fixed as part of Phase 2. So I just wanted to, to say that there will be better erosion control as part of the permanent fix when Phase 2 is installed.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Also have a speaker request form from Dan Baker, item 255.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you people tonight. The last time I was up here, I asked that somebody look into getting some surety placed on this entire development, so people like Mr. Alderman is not blackmailed into something, and there's going to be the funds available for the city to finish this product, the project, once and for all. Bring it up to the city standards, and the city codes, and, and your own landscaping and regulations, and I renew that request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I have no further speaker request forms. Anyone else wish to speak on any items, 188 through 262 inclusive? If not, we will move on. Yes, ma'am. Well, typically, we don't take questions at this point.
Well, just to clarify, if there is an issue.
You, you can certainly have your three minutes, so if you'd identify yourself.
Charity Doyle. I live on Mandalay Lane in South Robinsdale. And Marcia, the question is more directed to you.
Well, just, this was a public comment period.
Yes.
We typically don't allow, if you want to state the question generically, and then when we get to the item.
Okay.
We'll see if we can address it.
Generically, then, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question is, can the Eagle Ridge developers leave the landscaping, our lack of landscaping as it is, and still be in compliance with city ordinance?
Was there anything else that you would like?
Well, that's, I need the answer to that, the first part of that question, before I can continue.
We'll, we'll deal with that, actually, when we get to item 255. But if there's anything else that you would like to put on record, when we get to that.
Okay, I will, thank you. We were told that everything that this developer needed to do for Phase 1 has been completed, and we're just wondering how that can be in sync with city ordinance, if in fact it is not in existence. So, I think it's a valid issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak to any item, yeah, we're dealing with items 188 through 262. If not, we will move on. We are on to the continued public hearing consent items. These, these are items 188 through 200, 188 through 200 inclusive. Chair would ask if any of these items need to be pulled from the continued public hearing consent calendar. Marcia, how about from the rest of the staff or council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the public hearing consent items, items 188 through 200, per the recommendations in the printed agenda. Could we have a motion, please? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the public hearing consent items, items 188 through 200, per the recommendations in the printed agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the continued public hearing consent items. Chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing on items 188 through 262 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are on to the consent public hearing items. These are items 101 through 254 inclusive. 101 through 254 inclusive. What's that? What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. 201 through 254. And Marcia, do we need to pull any of those items? And 204, very good. How about from the council? Let's go to Alderwoman Kiran Olsen.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to put a motion on the floor.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items 101 through 254, with the exception of 201, 202, and 204. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent public hearing items, items 201 through 254 inclusive, with the exception of 201, 202, and 204. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 201, please. Karen, can you read that in for us, please?
Approve request by Larry Nelson for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential on all of Block 11 of Mahoney Edition, located at 229 Lindbergh Avenue. And my motion would be to continue this item to.
June 7th.
Pardon?
June 7th.
To June 7th, thank you very much.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to continue this, to the June 7th city council meeting. Any discussion on the continuation motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 202, please.
MG Oil Company, doing business at Chances Casino, 1565 Haynes Avenue, for retail on-off sale malt beverage license transfer from MG Oil Company, doing business Warehouse Bar, 200 East Main Street. And my motion would be, excuse me, thank you, acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal. We're dealing with item 202. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 204, please.
Matonia LLC, doing business at Rapid Valley Car Wash Liquor Store, 3800 East Highway 44 for a package. Oh, sorry. Black Hills Workshop for a special event malt beverage and wine license for an event scheduled July 24th, 2010, at Canyon Lake Resort, Resort 2720 Chapel Lane. My motion would be to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal. We're dealing with item number 204. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items 255 through 262. We're on to item number 255, please. Karen, if you would, please.
An appeal of the, of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by Forefront Design Incorporated for Eagle Ridge Properties LLC for a major amendment to a planned residential development on lots 2A and 2B of Block 1 of Black Hills Center, section property located at 121 Stumer Road. And my motion would be for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
For the applicants.
Okay, let's go with Marcia.
Marcia, does the city have the authority to require surety, as it was suggested by Mr. Baker?
Marcia?
I believe it is something that could be required as one of the conditions of approval.
It's something that we have required in other cases for landscaping.
Marcia?
I can't think of an instance where we have required that.
And then the, the other question is for Mr. Drew. And, and the question is, I saw on, on the screen earlier, the list of the police calls, and I saw a number of, of calls involving drugs. And I'm just, I'm wondering what the policy is that you've adopted relating to drug use on your, in your premise. I mean, if, if you discover it, is it an automatic eviction? And what, what process do you use if drugs have been discovered?
Mr. Drew?
I'll attempt to answer for you, Sam. Our property manager's name is Maureen Stevens, and she is very short-winded with that type of offense, you know? So yes, they are, they are. of offense, you know, so yes, they are, you know, they may be given a warning, but it's an early eviction for people that are drug use, because we, you know, we're trying to keep this, you know, apartment complexes can run, you know, with a bad name, okay? You can get a reputation very quickly in this business, and so Maureen runs a pretty tight ship when it comes to that stuff, so she's calling the police, and she's getting reported and getting them out of there.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
That helps.
So they're getting evicted automatically if there's drugs?
Yes.
Discovered? There's no second, third, fourth, fifth chances?
No, if you want them out of there.
And then, would you support a surety requirement? And if not, why not?
Mr. Drew, I think what he's referring to is surety for the landscaping.
For the landscaping. I think that we provided a small surety for Phase One to get some trees in that had to be completed during Phase Two. There's just about, there's like seven pine trees right at the edge that we took care of.
The question was dealing with Phase Two, and that was whether, what Mr. Quaker asked is, would you support?
I would support it, we'd be okay with it.
Okay.
So Marcia, would you be willing to help me with the language?
Marcia, I think what Alderman Quaker's looking for is just a recommendation of adding an additional stipulation.
Correct, you would probably want to add a stipulation number 18, that prior to issuance of a building permit, that a surety bond be constructed, or be submitted to ensure installation of the landscaping by a date certain. That date, as you'll notice in the memo that Vicki had attached and linked online, there was some question about what the appropriate date was. The applicant had proposed that that would be 90 days after the issuance of the permit. However, in all likelihood, based on the dates that the applicants provided with us, that would put us in the middle of November, and so you may would wish to have a early September, mid-September date to ensure that that landscaping got installed this fall.
Marcia, a quick question for you.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor.
So I will offer a motion as with the wording that Marcia Elgin suggested with a date of October 1.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend. Yep. Any discussion on the amendment? Patty, did you want to speak on the amendment? Okay, how about Karen Olson? Or Deb Hatcock? We're dealing with the amendment only, and we'll come back to the full... Okay, did anybody else wish to speak to the amendment?
Mine's on there.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
So on this amendment, is it going towards the six units that are now being built?
This is to post surety for all the landscaping requirements per the plan for Phase Two. Marcia, is that correct? The surety would be posted for the landscaping requirements per Phase Two.
Correct, and as Mr. Drew has been whispering in my ear, that would include the retaining wall that is part of that, that's necessary to make that occur.
And have we done that in the past, Marcia? Where we have developers post surety? Based on appeals by...
Neighbors?
...facing landowners? Is that what we do to make sure people do it, or is there a better mechanism in place that we wouldn't have to do the surety, but still could get that landscaping done?
Marcia?
That's really what I've seen in other parts of the country, that they do require that upfront as part of a construction project, to require that to be in place to make sure that it's installed in a timely manner. If you'll note, the stipulation that we had drafted originally was just to tie it to timeframes, that there was no surety. I do have to caution you that come October 1st, if that is not installed, it would be very difficult to try to get that landscaping installed before we have a hard freeze and get it started growing before...
Okay.
I guess that's my point, is you can do a 90-day, and then you can post surety, but if it becomes winter, and you can't, I mean, the plants aren't going to do them any good anyway. So I would hope that, I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but I don't think in the end it's going to work. So, in one sense, I want the landscaping done, but the 90-day surety, if it's based on a time limit, it's not going to work, it's not going to do anything.
Very good. The one benefit is that if surety is posted, and if it's not in by October 1st, is that correct? The city would have the ability to actually pull the surety, and we would have the money available to us to, once next spring, to actually move forward with that. Okay, Karen, did you want to talk to the amendment?
No.
Okay, we're going to deal with the amendment. The amendment on the floor is to add an additional stipulation, I believe it was 18, Marcia?
Correct.
18, to require surety to be posted, and that all landscaping be in place by October 1st. Any discussion on that motion, Marcia?
I'm sorry, I need clarification. The applicant has indicated again that they won't have the structures completed, their understanding of the intention was, but that would be the wall and the landscaping that would be along the western property boundary adjacent, and we need clarification of what the motion is.
That's not the motion on the floor, let me go back to the motion maker. Mr. Quaker, do you understand what Marcia's saying? I think what she's talking about is, they would have the ability to put the landscaping in outside of the construction zone, in other words, on the hill and to the adjacent properties, but I believe the landscaping, which will be directly around the buildings, will not be able to put in place because it won't be constructed.
That makes sense.
Okay. Is that all right with the secondor? Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Okay, we have some lights up. Alderman Costella, did you want to talk to the amendment? Okay, go ahead, please.
My question is in regards to erosion, and possible erosion coming, excuse me, next spring. We've already seen what can happen if there aren't erosion controls in place or landscaping. So in the event that landscaping is not in place, it's too late for the city to put in landscaping, and come spring 2011, there's a massive amount of erosion. Is the city then responsible to implement erosion control? And will, essentially, will that cut out from our little pot of money to do the landscaping?
It's a good question. I do not believe that the erosion control is actually part of the landscaping, but Marcia, help me out here.
Again, there's still a continuing obligation under other sections of the code for them to install the erosion sediment control, but you may wish to direct us to include in the landscaping cost the erosion sediment control to ensure that that will survive.
With the evidence that erosion is a concern here, I would like to include that.
Okay, is that all right with the motion maker?
It is.
And the secondor? Okay. The motion to amend would be to require the posting of surety to include landscaping, that it would be in place by October 1st, and that the cost of erosion control would also be included in that surety. Everyone clear on that motion?
So it is the date certain, it's October 1st?
October 1st. October 1st. Any further discussion on that motion to amend? Malcolm, okay? I see no further lights? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended, and that is with the addition of stipulation number 18, as we just voted on. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Excuse me, Mayor, are we still talking about 18?
No, no.
No, we're done with that, are we not?
No, we just adopted the stipulation, which was stipulation number 18 on item number 255. In other words...
I just have something else about item, that's been previously discussed.
Okay. We are taking discussion on item 255 as amended.
My question was raised somewhat by Mr. Quaker. I understood that you evict people, do they have to be convicted of drug use in order to be evicted?
Mr. Drew?
I would guess that there's... In other words, someone could live in your apartments quite a while if we're waiting until they're convicted.
Mr. Drew? Whoa, hang in a second. Your mic. Okay, go ahead.
I think if the property manager works it like this, if there's drugs found on their, in the apartment, that's when they're evicted. So I mean, they have to have some evidence before they can evict them. I mean, they call, they have some complaint, they call the police, and the police come out, and then they, you know, search the apartments and...
I guess I would ask our city attorney, I don't know if you can be evicted for, without...
So to Jason Green, of course, this would be an issue between the tenants and the landlord, not so much with the city, but Jason?
Karen, I can check with Sue Shepherd in the morning and get something to you on this.
The only reason I ask that question is, you know, if conviction, I mean, you have to have proof, and if you don't have proof, someone could remain in the apartments for an extended period of time while they're, while something is being determined. Interestingly enough, in my neighborhood, at the Corral Drive Apartments, they have drug testing. In order to live in the apartments, they have regular, in other words, to get an apartment, you have to take a drug test. And Chief Allender can probably talk about it, because it's some special program, and you guys come out and celebrate once a year at the Corral Drive Apartments about how safe they are, which they are. So that's my question, I haven't got an answer to this one. I think it is a problem.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a very common misconception that a criminal conviction is necessary to take adverse action against someone, and that's generally applicable to municipalities and other government entities, you want to allow that process to work through. But when we talk about agreements between private parties, that same protection does not apply. And in fact, I believe in some cases, those that are federally subsidized, I believe, as you've described, Ms. Olson, the Corral Drive, those protections are much, much lower for those that possess particularly substances regulated by the Federal Controlled Substances Act. So I think there is much more ability on the private part to take action before a conviction than you ever find in government.
Okay, thank you. Karen, you still have the floor.
Well, I don't feel there's been a conclusive answer concerning this particular question in regard to the apartments and the folks that are staying there, and so I guess I would, that's still a red flag for me, I guess that would be what I would say. I think it's still a problem.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably will come back and have other comments, but before we get too far gone, Charity, ask a question that we waited till this section. Did you get answers to your question?
Marcia?
Your questions?
There were two questions that were posted.
The question, as I understand it, is could they, would they be required to do anything in Phase Two if it was not, was not approved? In fact, the only thing that they could do would be to stabilize those soils, that would be part of the undeveloped site, and as such, again, they would have to stabilize it, put some grass seed on it, get that started to deal with some of the erosion sediment control, but they would not be allowed to do any of the improvements in that phase.
Okay, and she had a second question also, Marcia. And don't ask me what it was.
Thank you, because I don't remember either.
Charity, what was the second question, or Erin, do you remember what it was?
I believe it was, can all the phases be complete and not meet standards? Is that correct?
Okay.
Right, okay, she was told Phase One is complete, can the phases be complete and not meet city standards?
Phase One has been complete in accordance with the plan. Appears there's been some damage on the site, but with some of the enclosures that probably need to be fixed, but that is standalone apart from Phase Two. So Phase One could stay there, again, the only thing that would be done with the remaining portion of Phase Two is that it would be ceded to take care of the erosion sediment control, would not be part of the developed site, and until they came back and got approval for a major amendment to the planned development, there could be no development in that area.
Okay. Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor.
Just another question. Bob was up, he said what we're really talking about here is six additional units, versus... Okay, eight. So if this fails, then they can still do all of the other, whatever there were previously approved under the PRD a few years ago, is that correct?
Marcia?
To my knowledge, no. The Phase Two has to be completed within two years, that was a stipulation of approval, so they are outside of that timeframe. So they could not move forward with Phase Two until they got a major amendment.
Okay, thank you.
It's my understanding.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Just a couple of things. Chief Allender, we, last time had you look into the crime rate and what was really the statistics out there, you were saying that some of the statistics weren't what was on the paper. Do you have an update on that, sir?
Let's go to Chief Allender. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. There's two reports on this neighborhood, one is the seven major crimes, and I think that's the one that was emailed out, it has 11 incidents within a two-thirds of a mile radius of Stumer and Enchantment Road.
What's the timeline on that, chief?
Really, um... It's in, I believe it's 2009.
Okay, thank you.
But that really doesn't tell us much, what's really more telling is the calls for service, and why the police were called to the location, and how that compares to other apartment complexes, if nothing else. So I believe the numbers that were brought up earlier, the 150-some, where it was actually 2009 and part of 2010. We refined some of those numbers, or some of that analysis, and come up with 139 calls in this 96-unit neighborhood, so in 96 homes, 136 or 139 calls. And in the top five categories, we had 14, or we had 25 disturbances in 2009, we had 14 noise complaints, 12 parking complaints, 10 times, police officers went up there to follow up on a previous incident, and those are counted also, and we had eight times, someone misdialed 911, and we had to go check out to make sure everything was okay, and then, so all the rest of the call types are less than eight. So that equates to about 1.4 calls per unit to this location. Similarly-sized apartment complex in another neighborhood has 564 calls per year. Another similarly-sized one has a smaller number, about 42 calls. So what's, tell us, honestly, if you took 96 homes in Rapid City, the number of times a phone call came from one of those homes would probably be pretty similar, but the issue is, you don't have 96 homes spread out over a two-square-mile area or whatever, you have it in a very small lot, and that's why, that's why it seems so bad. So that's what I know about the calls for service statistics here, and the crime in that neighborhood.
Deb, you still have the floor.
I guess that's what I wanted to hear, is what was it compared to other units? And you said, compared to other units, there's usually about average of 564 calls in that type of unit. Some people had said on, because it was low income and other things, I think sometimes, if you look at that, not all the apartment complexes in Rapid City are low income, and it's just based on low income. Sometimes it's just based on many people being in one area, creating more, sometimes havoc, being in that close of vicinity and that close together. So there was a couple of things that did concern me, was erosion on the property and landscaping, and I didn't understand at this point why there were still erosion problems, even if it's Phase One or Phase Two, it should be taken care of right away. I mean, it shouldn't be draining onto the street, causing havoc, or mud, or muck all over. The landscaping, you can't do all that landscaping, but you can do something to at least help the neighbors, put up fencing, put up even more erosion control, do some things to aesthetically, and it doesn't cost that much money, I believe, to make those people feel that you're at least trying to make a difference. The other thing with being from a low-income family, growing up on the north side, sometimes the kids need a park area, someplace where you can put up some equipment, which makes a huge difference, doesn't cost a lot of money, and it gives those kids somewhere to play besides the street or somewhere else. College Park was one of those areas that made a big difference for us on the north side, and it still does. side, and it still does. I see tons of kids in that area, and that's a huge difference, maybe just a suggestion to the developers to put up some park equipment in some of that grassy knoll or even whatever, to make a difference for those neighbors and themselves, so they can see that you're trying to be good neighbors. Based on what I've been listening to from some of the neighbors, you had said something about reputation of apartment complexes. For some reason, because of landscaping, erosion, and what they see as a viable crime rate, they think your apartment complex is a menace. Unfortunately, based on some of what we heard, it, some of it's just normal, but they're seeing it from across the street. So the main thing is, is be a good neighbor. I said it last time. Some of those things can be easily done with parks, a little bit of landscaping, a little bit of cleanup, and having your person that is looking at crime rate or whatever and taking care of drug problems, maybe should be outside making sure aesthetically that there's not garbage all over and some other things. Those are huge things for being good managers. So just a couple suggestions. I don't think this is a bad thing. Malcolm hit on it, it's six units. It's, in a sense, being a good neighbor, and I think, based on you guys meeting with the people out there, trying again and again, trying to get, what can we do next? What is something that can make that difference? I think you can get that done. Some of these things are just normal issues. They're Phase Two, unfortunately, or I should say fortunately, Mr. Quaker did bring some surety up. That should help some of the neighbors out there to know that Phase Two, they're going to get the landscaping and some of those erosion taken care of. And if not, there is code enforcement and other things. Hopefully, that can add to that, and maybe a call from code enforcement sometimes wakes up people that own the properties and say, you know, we need some help here, guys. So anyway, I know I went on and on, but again, sometimes I don't think it's just a low-income issue. It's just an area where you have to be a good neighbor. That can happen in any area, any apartment complex, based on who's managing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo some of Deb Hadcock's comments. I know a number of the people here tonight mentioned my neighborhood. I would like to remind folks that the Eagle Ridge Apartments are part of the neighborhood, and I would hope that people will continue to work together to help improve, because my ward also includes the Eagle Ridge Apartments, as well as you folks out here tonight. I want to make sure that it's fair for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if Mr. Alderman didn't put it in the best terms that due to our planning, or maybe in some people's opinions or minds, maybe a lack of planning, we've been forced into an issue that is not a good solution for. I mean, you weigh out what ends up being the best solution for the neighborhood, and we can skirt the issue as much as you want when you have an area that's developed into, I would say, probably three times the price range of a normal home in Rapid City, say, a normal home would be anywhere from 125 to 150. Those houses in that area run from 250 to probably into millions. Somewhere in our planning process, we allowed a very dense, multifamily unit dwelling directly in the neighborhood next to an area of this caliber. And we can skirt the issue or say what we want, but there's huge ramifications when you do that. And I think someone had mentioned earlier about dispersing, dispersing these types of units in the future into smaller pods, more manageable pods. The chief has alluded to the fact of what apartment units in general cost for calls of action when you stick ninety-six or a hundred and, in this case, a hundred and fifty-some people in into one very dense area. You're going to have a lot of traffic, you're going to have a lot of noise, you're going to have a lot of these disturbance calls and these types of things in the neighborhood. And now, the rest of the people that live in the neighborhood got to deal with it. And I can't believe that a little foresight amongst what we're doing here as a city council couldn't have maybe looked at this in a different avenue and come up with a better approach. Now, we're, now we have ninety-six units out of a hundred and fifty-some units, and that's already been built. Landscaping, that's not, not complete, because it wouldn't make any sense now to complete it without, I mean, they'd just have to come back and rip it up again to put in another building, if that would have been the case. Understanding the economic downturn, changes, how things are being done, I can't put the cat back in the bag. I can't take the cat and put it back in the bag after the cat's already been let out of the bag. Now, we're facing not only this Eagle Ridge thing, we're going to be facing the huge development that's going to be put over there. And we're going to have, we're going to, we're going to be addressing more than just this issue. We're going to be addressing the traffic issues, the increased police protection in that area, the increased noise pollution that's going to happen in this area, and for us to sit here and try to skirt these issues is, is crazy. I've had several discussions with, with the partners in this project, and have gotten some assurances from other partners in the project that what we've experienced in the past over there is not going to be intended to happen. Again, everybody in the council's got a note from one of the partners that he's signed his, his name to, understanding that sometimes that doesn't always cure everything. We've got a surety in place for the landscaping. The fences will help, but at some point, this council's got to face what's going to happen over there when this thing's done, and when that, if, when and if, the other project happens over there with, with the increased traffic through this neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's going to be intense, to say the least. The people come out of the apartment, they go up enchanted, and they, and they cut through the neighborhood, they come back down. I watched it, I witnessed it myself. I can't put it better than Mr. Alderman, so then I'm torn between trying to make this thing, to finish this thing out and make it better, and, or just not have it happen. If I have a feeling if it doesn't happen, then it's going to, it's going to be a worst-case scenario over there. It's, with, with the neighborhood, with the landscape, and all those types of things, and I just, I'm not sure how we weigh that all out, but in the future, this is, if anything's a planning poster child, this would be it, that whole area over there, to see how it was planned there, and then basically jumped upon the neighbors after they'd invested their life savings into their houses there. Some of the, some of these people, or almost all of them, their, their home purchase is their lifeblood. That's their, that's what they, I mean, that's what they invest all their money into, all their hard work into, and now, now we're going to change the landscape of that area over there. And people may argue the fact that, that there was planned over there, but I don't know, necessarily know that it was planned in this, in this arena. I think that what there was, planning for MBR, there is specific types of zonings that take place, and buffering, and MDR is, is a buffering for a neighborhood, but I'm not sure if it's appropriate for buffering a neighborhood that has million-dollar houses in it. And Alderman Hadcock had made, made references to playground areas over there. There's a lot of people in there. The playground equipment over there is probably as insufficient as any of I've seen, but that's not my, that's not my deal. I mean, I think that, that would be called upon by the partners of this organization to be responsible and have a place for those kids to play, other than in the streets and up and down the streets or in the neighbors' yards, so. But understanding that, I think that having assurances from some of these partners in the area of, of the landscaping, some of the catholics that are being put in because of the acidic soil over there to prevent water main breaks or sewer breaks, is very important to, to the future of Rapid City as they take on that infrastructure as part of their, part of their infrastructure, as a public infrastructure. Surety will be in place, which will give some assurance, but my biggest concern is, I think, I think I got enough commitment from these partners that this, this thing is going to happen correctly this time and not have all my neighbors sending me emails and phone calls. I've got a list of them that I've shared with some people, and about the concerns of how this thing looks in the future, so. With that being said, I'd probably listen to the rest of the, the rest of the council here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval as amended with stipulations. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Whoops. Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, at one point, I would like to get a commitment out of you and our police department to put a little bit of added, added presence in that area over there if this goes forward, not only with, with the calls for service, but some of the speeding, trafficking things that over here, and that our council looks into that, that traffic issue. We've skirted it. I know stop signs and those things aren't the best way to, to control traffic, but I think that we need to have some sort of, we need, we need to come together on this thing before we move forward on anything else over there.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval as amended with stipulations. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyffenbach, I think, asked a reasonable question. Is the police department, the mayor's office, committed to addressing the traffic control issues? And I didn't hear an answer to that. If we could just get something in the record, I'd appreciate it.
We will, we will certainly take a look at it. We have, I've been having discussions with staff as far as how to deal with traffic issues, not only from Eagle Ridge, but also with the proposed Walmart, so that is in process, so. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is approval with stipulations as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We're on to item number 256, please. Karen, would you please read that in?
A request by Sean Brinkman and Kurt Garlic for a petition for, or annexation on lots 3M, 3P, 3Q, 3R, 3L on property located south of South Dakota Highway 44 and east of Valley Drive. My motion is for approval.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're dealing with item number 256. This is petition for annexation. Marcia, go ahead.
This comes forward. This comes forward.
Hang on one second. If you would, let me turn, let me turn the mic on and off. Thank you. We're doing dueling buttons.
Dueling buttons, thank you. This comes forward to you from the annexation committee. As you'll see, this is part of the South Valley Drive annexation area, and after the annexation was completed, we realized that there were four lots that had dropped out of the legal description in the middle of the document. As such, the annexation committee was, reviewed this, and we went back to them. They've directed us to work with landowners. Karen Bowman has contacted all four property owners. Two of them have signed the petition, as has the one resident voter of the area. I do need to make you aware of the fact that the, there are two property owners, one who had indicated their opposition to the annexation, and one who simply did not respond to our request for the annexation petitions to be signed. We meet the requirements of the ordinance and the statute, which is that seventy-five percent of the voters and seventy-five percent of the owners of value of the land in the district have signed the petitions, but I wanted to make sure that you are aware of the other stipulations and conditions. They are outlined in detail in the staff report for your review.
Very good. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
So basically, there's two that want in and two that want out?
Marcia?
Two that have signed the petition and agreed to the annexation, one that has not responded, and one that has expressed his opposition.
I would say the one that didn't respond is probably opposing. Is there any way you can just annex the two that want in, and leave the other two out?
Marcia?
Certainly, the council could do that. I'll just remind you that this was part of the forced annexation area, and if the legal's description had been correct, they would already be annexed in.
So basically, we already voted on this?
It went through the full process, and it was intended that this property be included as part of that South Valley Drive annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item 257, please.
Second reading of ordinance 5608, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning of within-described property as requested by Larry Nelson for a rezoning from low-density residential district to medium-density residential on property located at 229 Lindbergh Avenue, and I would ask that this be continued as the other piece of...
June 7th.
As, to June 7th, as was the other item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 257 to the June 7th city council meeting. Any discussion on the continuation motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 258, please.
A request by Kent Bruger for a special exception to the flood area reconstruction regulations on the property located along, excuse me, on property located east of the intersection of Chapel Lane and Shore Drive. My motion would be for approval.
With stipulations?
With stipulations.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 260, please.
A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Daryl Johnson for an variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to dedicate right-of-way, construct pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer, along the section line highway, and to reduce the required pavement width from forty-eight feet to twenty-two feet, to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer along Sheridan Lake Road as per chapter fifteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code on property located at 9850 Sheridan Lake Road. My motion would be for approval with stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're actually dealing with item 260. We skipped 259. We'll come right back with that. So we're dealing with item 260. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
That stipulation will require you to go back and approve that waiver of right to protest, if you would. Do that next.
Okay. Chair will call that, the motion on the floor out of order, and will, Karen, could you please read in item number 259 first, please?
Thank you. authorize the mayor and finance officers to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water and sewer along the section line highway, and to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer and pavement along Sheridan Lake Road as they abut Lot 14 of Fayreder subdivision located along Sheridan Lake Road. My motion is for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 260 now, please.
A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Daryl Johnson for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to dedicate right-of-ways, construct pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer along the section line highway, and to reduce the required pavement width from forty-eight feet to twenty-feet, two feet, to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer along Sheridan Lake Road as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code on property located at 9850 Sheridan Lake Road. My motion is for approval.
With stipulations, correct?
Yes, with stipulations.
Okay, very good. We're dealing with item 260. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 261, please.
Authorize the mayor and finance office to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installment, installation of pavement along the alley right-of-way, and to install streetlight conduit along Clark Street as they abut lots A, B, D, and E of property located along Clark Street. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 262, please.
A request by Doug Noes for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install pavement along the alley right-of-way, and to install sidewalks along the north side of Clark Street, and to install streetlight conduit along Clark Street on property located west of 12th Street and eastern terminus of Hills, Forest Hills Drive connecting with Clark Street. My motion to be acknowledged, the applicant's withdrawal of part and approval in part with stipulations as per the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item 262, which is to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal in part and approve in part per the stipulations of the Planning Commission. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Preston, the bill list, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The bill list totals $2,893,460.47. There are no changes or additions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list totaling $2,893,460.47. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session.
Yes, and it would be for the purpose...
Yes, and it would be for the purposes permitted by SDC L 1-25-2.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by SDC L 1-25-2. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you, everyone.